All right, so why don't we reconvene and we will go to number 18, Administrative Office, approve and authorize Board Chair to sign the attached response to the fiscal year 2014 and '15 grand jury report.
Thank you. On June 19th, the Board received the copy of the grand jury report and has 90 days to respond as prescribed by California Penal Code 933. As done in the past, the Administrative Office drew up the draft responses to the findings and recommendations in the grand jury report that required Board of Supervisors' response. I emailed those out to each of the Board members for their comments, concerns, any revisions, asked that they respond individually to me, not as a group, obviously, or to each other. I did not receive any comments back as far as requested revisions, so I brought forth the proposed responses to the grand jury report on behalf of the Board of Supervisors for approval and authorizing the Chair to sign that response. Upon approval, the Board Chair can sign those and we can get those to Superior Court Judge by the required date of September 19th.
So, do we have any public comments on this matter?
I have a question, not a comment. When an agency or department responds to the grand jury's questions and the responses are false, what action can be taken? Is it reportable to the District Attorney that they're lying to the grand jury? Or how is that handled? How could that be handled?
I guess I'm not, I'm not quite sure what you're asking. Who would be making a false statement to the grand jury?
The responding party, the agency who the grand jury is questioning or looking into or interviewing. When the questions come back and they're published in a report and they're false...
So, you're saying that the grand jury information is inaccurate? Or the people responding to the grand jury is inaccurate?
Yes.
The second?
Pardon?
The second, meaning the response to the grand jury is inaccurate?
Yes. And what they put out, you know, as their report, you read it and you go, "Well, that's not true. Why did they say ...?"
The response?
The response, that is not true.
Typically, the response is the agency's opinion of what is being asked of them. If somebody disagrees with that information, it is something that that individual can bring back forward to the grand jury and identify as questioning the validity of it. Because the grand jury can come back and ask for further clarification and for additional information from the agency.
So, it'd be another complaint in that complaint form. Thank you.
Joe Kelly, from the unrepresented area of District 1. Under Response to Finding 5, and this is about the jail, adequate staffing of the jail remains an issue due to difficulty in recruiting retaining correctional officers. Is this due to the folks come in there, they get their post-training somewhere, come in, stay a short time, and then get sucked up by the state for corrections? What is, what is the thing that's drawing, causing the people to come in and go to work here in the jail process as correctional officers or whatever, to be leaving in such short, with either short notice? Or is there a big retirement thing going on from old, the other folks that were here before the new jail was built? Down on the, below Finding 5, the last paragraph says, "The new jail has been in operation for one year." And that starts it out to make me go, "Well, so what?" Because the next thing talks about, "An in-depth analysis would be required to determine additional staffing needs, resolve recruiting, and staff retention issues, determine actual bed space cost." You know, we spent a whole, I'm sorry, the county, the Board of Supervisors at the time, spent a whole heck of a lot of time going over things. They spent probably more time than it took to write this, going over the issue of how much they were going to spend on a consultant to figure out what they were going to do on a new jail when it originally started. So, they also did talk about staffing and all this other stuff, and I thought there were in-depth analysis of it. And there were discussions that are all talked about in here as to, oh, this is the other thing I like, is, "As such," in that same paragraph, "As such at the bottom, 'As such, the county will also need to take into consideration the cost of services to inmates' families should they move to Calaveras County in order to be closer to family members.'" What? What cost of services to inmates' families? Are we going to support them? Are we going to do the same thing the federal government does and support undocumented aliens? Is that what these folks are coming in to be, or what? Or that they're legal citizens, or they're citizens born here and we're going to have to support them? I don't quite understand this stuff that's written in here, and we need to understand AB, and then on the next page, it says, "It's also important to note that state funding AB-900 was used to construct the new jail. Any agreements to rent bed space would require prior approval from the state." If I recall correctly, Sheriff Downham was very vocal about other county, state, and federal rental of bed space, and it never went anywhere. It's a shame that we didn't know, have a crystal ball to see what was going to happen now, or in the last few years, while this thing was being constructed and everything else. But while it was being constructed, other issues should have been looked at like these and still waiting until after the first year of occupancy, and we're supposed to be at half level, and now we want to rent bed space. Again, it should have been all thought out as part of the original process. I sat through most of all the original processes that went on. I want to be sure that law enforcement's half percent sales tax, Prop. 172, 1993, the dedicated half cent sales tax is still going, or that proportionate share of whatever however much goes, is going to the sheriff's office. On Finding 10, employees' separation costs have not been budgeted. These costs can include unused vacations, sick days, plus other contractual obligations. Response to Finding 10. The Board of Supervisors agrees with Finding 10. The recommendation will not be implemented at this time. It will be implemented when the county budget is structurally balanced and additional resources become available to fund the estimated employee separation cost of $1.6 million. So, in this, does that mean there's a $1.6 million deficit in the scheme of things somewhere, either within the financials of this jail or in the overall county budget?
30 seconds.
That's it. Thank you.
If I could address some of those questions and issues. The original staffing study that was done for the jail and operational cost was done in, I believe it was 2011, and was submitted to the state. Obviously, things have changed in the last four years, and it was our best guess of what some of those costs would be once the jail was up and running. And it's important, I think, to ensure that when we look at the cost of operating the jail, that we look at those indirect costs that are not strictly in the jail budget, and to make sure that the numbers that we put forth in the staffing report in 2011 are still accurate and still in place. The issues regarding recruiting and retaining staff, we're a small county, our wages aren't necessarily comparable, especially with the state jobs for correctional officers. There may be those who come and, for a training round in our jail. We are looking at, the sheriff's office has been looking at a new program to try and really support recruitment and retention of local people through the sheriff's intern program. It will be mentioned in the presentation, budget presentation this afternoon, and it will be before the Board for their consideration, hopefully on September 22nd, as we plan. Part of the problem is, is our correctional officer salaries in comparison to the state jobs, and we can't raise those to that level, so we do have to look at other methods of recruiting and retaining. And I think the interim program will help us with that. As far as renting out bed space, yes, Sheriff, then Sheriff Downham did talk to that extensively, but it was more in regards to what the sheriff dormitory, which was the additional space that was going to be constructed with Measure J funds, should those funds carry that far. Once we got into the full construction and design of the buildings, it became clear that the dormitory was not a possibility. We did not have sufficient funding through Measure J to construct, to do the matches that were required for the jail, plus the sheriff's office building, and the dormitory was eliminated, and that was where then Sheriff Downham was really looking to do the rent space. Because AB-900 funding was used for a huge portion of the jail, we are required, under the resolutions that were adopted and passed in the agreements that we have with the state, that any and all contracts, it doesn't matter whether it's contract for food, whether it's contract for radios, it doesn't matter what the contract is for, it has to be approved by the state and go through the state. That's why it is stated in here that any rental of bed space would require a contract with a surrounding county or another entity. It would require to be taken to the state for their approval. As far as cost of families that, of the inmates that may be incarcerated under the realignment with state prisoners, possible AB-109, staying in our jail for a longer period of time, if those are the inmates that are brought into the jail and they're going to be incarcerated three to five years, there's a good possibility those families may move into the county to be closer, and yes, they may require services such from Health and Human Services, whether it's through the Affordable Care Act, whether it's through CalFresh, or whatever. We don't know, we've never really done a study as to how many families relocate to be close to their family members, and what services they then go to the county to request through Health and Human Services or through Social Services. So, it would be interesting to see what other counties have experienced if they rent bed space. And if not, you know, just taking into consideration how many in our own county have families that are availing themselves of those services while their family member and maybe a portion of their family's support is incarcerated. And unfunded liability, trying to get them all. Unfunded liability, at the moment, the county is more of a pay-as-you-go, so when somebody leaves county employment to take another job, or, and what we're paying out is vacation. We don't pay out sick time, except for if somebody retires, they can take up to $1,500 of their sick time and/or apply their portion to their service credit. At the moment, when somebody leaves, they are paying out their vacation time, it comes out of whatever budget unit they are, salary and wages are paid in. And on most times, because of the length of time it takes to recruit a new position for that job, it doesn't seriously impact that budget. However, there are times when it does, especially if it's a longstanding employee and we're talking a lot of money. I mean, a significant payout of 320 hours. Or there has been other things that take into consideration, then it could impact budget, and we would look at that, at that time. The unfunded liability to fund that $1.6 million or stop funding it, yes, it would be a good idea, it would look good on our financial statements, it would be there so that budgets wouldn't have to take a hit. But on an ongoing basis, our annual expenditures still exceed our annual revenues, and we are using our fund equity balance that was rolled forward of unspent money from the year before, and a portion of teeter funds to close that deficit. So, until we get, close that gap further, I couldn't recommend setting, trying to fund that $1.6 million. And that, at this point in time, we continue to fund that as you, as we go. When people leave, we pay out, and it comes out of the department's budget.
Was that all?
I think that was everything.
Cheer you up, right?
Wow. That's good. Any other public comments?
I had, got a lot of comments, but they're already answered. I want to say that I'm proud of this Board, you've done a very good job in administration. The grand jury thing is, a lot of it seems to me to be a little bit frivolous, and however the reasoning behind, in your response, seemed to be, seemed to be pretty good. And now, I do have a question on that $1.6 million. If the $1.6 million is not budgeted, but it's going to be spent, then the money has to come from somewhere, so it has to come out of your reserves or contingencies or some other place. Why not put in the budget to begin with?
At the moment, Mr. Segala, the money comes out of the departmental budget. So, if I was to leave today or retire today, the money to pay out my vacation time would come out of the Administrative Office current year budget. And by the time, with the thought that by the time the Board found someone to replace, that recruitment time and the salary savings going forward would cover the cost of the payout of the vacation. So, the vacations are being paid out within department budgets in the current fiscal year as they happen. The $1.6 million is based on everybody's accrued vacation time on the books, times their hourly rate, what the cost would be if all accounting component employees left at the same time would have to pay out that $1.6 million.
Okay, I understand that better. What is our current liability for Calpers? I understand that there's an unfair liability that has to do with the payments that we make for the future? Do you have, do you know that roughly what that amount is?
Is it about $19 million now, or is it more?
33.
33, is that for safety in?
No, it's just for...
Okay. What that is, is again, we don't have to pay the 33 million all at once. It is calculated into our annual rate that we pay based on employee salaries each year. So, every year around October, we get what the rate is going to be for the coming year. That rate is to cover, not only to start paying, hopefully start paying down the unfunded liability, but it's also to fund the current year's cost. So, what PERS looks at is, they do an actuarial determining where our employees are, when they're likely to retire, the history behind it, how old they will be, how long they'll collect benefits, et cetera, et cetera, how much they earned, returned on investment compared to what they estimated, and they calculate each county's contribution rate.
Which actually is probably a question for our next agenda item, right?
And I think there is a slide that will be speaking to some of those PERS issues that the Audit and Controller will be talking about after lunch.
Okay, that's good, then. Good time for me to sit down. Thank you.
Thanks, Al. Didn't mean to chase you off there, Al.
Vicki Ranke, Angels Camp. I just wanted to bring up one of the findings and recommendations and ask that you make this a priority in this county. And that is, Finding 3, Recommendation 2, "The grand jury recommends that the county explore opportunities to grow its revenue and tax base. For example, streamlining the permitting process could help attract new business to the county while aiding local contractors and existing small business owners." That sounds like a really, really good idea, and I hope that it comes up on your agenda soon. Thanks.
That's related to the wells in the Wallace part of the county?
Yeah.
It says, "Many wells in the western part of the county draw water from the San Joaquin County water sub-basin and have failed?"
Yeah, I don't know why. It's only under there, but the whole idea is important in this county, and it seems like work that you guys...
Yeah, that's what that finding is referring to.
Right.
But, but your comment is county-wide.
In general, right.
Okay.
In all of the permitting and the county. Thank you.
It's also Finding 3 under the County Administrative Office and Budget Process, and it speaks to opportunities to grow revenue and tax base. But again, you know, the revenue and tax base for the county, for county government itself, is very limited. Our largest revenue is from property taxes, and so, yes, the economy would affect home values as people come in, and those are added to the base. But beyond that, it's very limited, outside of fees for service that have to have a nexus to actual cost of providing those services. It's, the Board is very... Okay, I'll be quiet.
Ring the bell.
It's very limited to what the Board can do. Some of the options are an increase to the TOT or to the sales tax, but again, that requires voter approval.
All right. Any other public comments?
Mike F. P., Oversight of Calaveras County Water Providers, 18.8, page 193. You created it, I'm talking about the Board of Supervisors, and you're constantly funding one way or another pros and cons, regardless of issues concerning water. I feel as a taxpayer, I either pay double for the ideology, or you two are nullifying And that's why I brought up a while back about property tax, how much no stakeholders are still paying into water districts. And I know it's been done for a long time, but just like we had Board of Supervisors here for a long time, we managed to change those things. This is an important issue. Either you're both speaking, and let's be paying double for that ideology that you want to promote, I don't care which side of the water she run, or CCWD, we decided to speak behalf of everybody, because they get property tax from everybody, and you're receiving money, and you disagree, let's nullify it. Us, the suckers, the taxpayers, we pay double for the same damn thing. It's a waste. Tulare County watershed deal, a couple of years, two years ago, you both put $16,000 or $13,000 into it, you give it to Tulare Water District, nothing ever happened. You ratepayers paid twice for the same policy. I know there's a difference between getting rid of waste and water rights. One, you can turn a faucet off, another one is you're required to get rid of it, and some of it in your districts. If you think there might be some, let's say not exactly clean activities, Board of Supervisors in prior years, you want to see a slum, a totally wet sludge, that's CCWD. Yeah, that's straight, folks, that's CCWD. And I don't want to go into, you know, the details right now, it's not the time. But that stinks like holy hell, folks. I hopefully, sometime in the near future, take a look at it. The Board of Supervisors created them. The Board of Supervisors can do something about it, because the only ones that's really getting the real shaft is your constituents. Thank you.
Any other public comments? Board comments?
Shirley, how long do you spend with the grand jury? Do they, what's the process? Do they meet with you on an annual basis? Do they meet with you on complaint-driven only?
They meet as required, they require, or will request a meeting with the CAO. I spent, I spent about three hours with them and gave them an overview of the budget process as Assistant CAO last year. Again, it just depends, I don't know how much time the previous CAO spent with them prior to the putting out this report. I do know that outside of that one meeting with them to basically go over the, discuss budget, they did not ask me to return. And each grand jury is different. I think it really depends on what areas they're looking at, and how much that, they need the input from the CAO. But each grand jury is different.
Any other board comments? No.
Oh, quick comment, a couple, a couple of things. Through AB-109, I noticed that we provide services to families of inmates that are here for three to five years. Is there any provision for reimbursement from the state to the county for those services by those families?
Through the CCP, which is where the AB-109 money comes through, they meet, and it's all the interested parties that have, that are involved in serving those inmates and their families. Specifically, 109 provides services to the inmates, not to the, to the families themselves. If the family requires services such as CalFresh, which used to be called food stamps, or, or through the Affordable Care Act, or Medi-Cal, or Cash Aid, that would be done through Health and Human Services, as well as employment training or anything else. And that is state and federally funded for the most part with, depending on the program, a share of cost, CalFresh is 100% federally funded. So, there's another pocket of money to serve those families with those particular services.
So, those benefits are actually received by the inmate, and it's filtered down?
No, no, no. Those, those that have come through Health and Human Services are funded for the families, not for the inmate. The AB-109, any services they are provided to AB-109, whether it's helping them get their GED, helping with substance abuse issues, helping with mental health issues, whatever their issues are, job, whatever... their issues are, job, whatever, that's funded through AB 109. The other part is their families. If their families are impacted because somebody's incarcerated, and that was their major breadwinner, they would then go to Health and Human Services and apply for, it could be cash aid, could be food stamps, could be health insurance, whatever.
But it doesn't matter if they were, doesn't matter if they were families of inmates or not. Anybody.
No, anybody could do that.
Any resident of the county.
No, anybody that qualifies. What I'm saying is, there's this one part of money through federal and state and programs in place to help those people who are living below the poverty line. And then there's this other part of money, the AB 109, that is strictly for the inmates.
I did notice in reviewing this once again, we have an audit system in place for our county, correct?
Yes, we do. Yes, we have, the current outside auditing firm is Smith &amp; Newell. I think they've already been here a little bit, and they'll be here more in October, November, October. They do the comprehensive audit of all our funds to ensure that we are abiding by everything, all the laws that we're supposed to be abiding by and that we're using the money, that the audit is ensuring that we use the money the way we're supposed to use the money. And they do a very comprehensive audit.
I, I brought that up because I noticed that, or may have been misinterpreted it, that the grand jury suggested that a more complete audit or something take place?
No, what they were suggesting was that they wanted to participate in the process of selecting the outside auditing firm.
Okay.
And we have done that for the last two RFPs. We have included members of the grand jury on the review panel that reviews the applications of the firms that have submitted proposals to do our outside audit. They have, and they just wanted, what they recommended was that that be formalized in writing, that policy or that procedure formalized in writing, that the grand jury sits on and participates in the review and recommendation of the outside auditing firm.
Okay, thank you very much. One more last issue. It's my understanding that any contract regarding rental out space of our existing jail has to be approved by the state.
All contracts have to be approved by the state, that, for the jail.
Do we have any programs right now? I know, now we're in 2015, we've got our jail up and running. I know we have a staffing problem. But do we have any projected programs in place now to achieve that rental income from the jail?
I think we have to do some further analysis because we've had staffing shortages in the jail for such a lengthy period of time. It's, how many more staff would be required, and can we get them, quite frankly? And I believe that the sheriff's office is working on that analysis. And the problem is, is retention as well. So, again, we need to look at what it is that we need to do to retain the correctional officers. And one of the things that, as I mentioned, is the student intern program, which will give those people from ages 18 to 21, who can't go into the academy, a chance to go into the intern program, work in the different divisions of the sheriff's office, custody and control, communications, which is dispatch, evidence, and.
Admin.
Admin. I don't have it in front of me, so I don't remember all the components. But, and hopefully that they'll realize that somewhere along the way, this is what would accrue it that they would like. And if they're 18 and they've passed all the background and everything else, and they decide that a correctional officer is what they want to be here in the county where they reside, then they can go through and move into that if provided they meet all the requirements.
Historically, those programs are very successful for new candidates for law enforcement.
For recruiting, for the sheriff's recruit, it has been successful in the past. And that's when they're at least 20 and a half, because they have to be 20 and a half to go into the academy. They go through the academy pass and come back and work for the sheriff's department. There really hasn't been one in place to look at the same for custody correctional officers that time. The intern program is relatively new. Stanislaus County just implemented it recently. We've kind of modified it so it benefits the sheriff's offices, modified it so it benefits their needs. And we're putting the final touches on that to come back for approval. But that gives them the opportunity to look at other areas of law enforcement that they normally wouldn't have that ability to do, because with the sheriff's recruit, it's you go into the academy and you either make it or you, or you don't.
Thank you very much.
And that kind of coincides with us attracting, or getting Delta College to do some of the administrative justice classes up here, too, so that bolsters that program a little bit.
And then just to follow up on the grand jury with the auditor. Prior to me taking office back in 2011, we determined that there probably was not enough involvement from the grand jury on making the selection of the independent auditor. So, we did coordinate with the grand jury and the administrative office to put out an RFP. We made sure that the grand jury members were actually part of putting the RFP together, sitting on that panel and making the selection. So, you know, I think it's kind of new, because I think historically Shirley and I both looked, and we couldn't really see the last time that that may have happened in that, in that way. But really, they're there not only to facilitate, you know, basically independent audits if there were some concerns with, which the grand jury can certainly reach out to, that independent auditor if they had some concerns on a financial basis to the outside auditor. But they also help make sure that the county is keeping on track with any changes that the state comptroller is bringing down, the governmental accounting standards board, major changes that PERS might have in place. So, they're really trying to keep us on top of all of those accounting changes. And they're making sure that we're not under or overstating revenues or expenditures. And that's in, that's important for outside, our outside audience. If our credit rating is based on our financial reports, they want to make sure that those financial reports are as accurate as they possibly can be.
Thank you very much, Ms. Beck.
And there were, out of a panel, a review panel of five, there were two grand jury members on the last review panel.
Okay, any other comments?
Sorry, I missed that.
Any other comments? Wasn't mine. Seriously. All right. Yeah, it was, perfect time. That's why, any other?
Had dramatic effect.
Yeah, so, can I have a motion, please, to approve this response to the grand jury?
So moved.
Second? Okay, so I have a motion by Supervisor Pawnee, second by Supervisor Wright. All in favor?
Aye.
Closed. It's 5-0. Okay, so, before we move on to number 19, which is going to be probably lengthy, we're going to break for lunch. So, we'll be back, we'll be back at 1:00.